How many times?
That's it. Pledge of allegiance.
Let's have our cult order pledge of allegiance. Could we stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sylvia, roll call.
Council President Harris?
Here.
Counselor Kiper?
Here.
Counselor Robinson?
Here.
Counselor Garland?
Here.
Counselor Young?
Here.
Thank you.
So before we get started, I just want to say a few words. I am feeling like a toddler who's just learning to walk. I've done it before, but I'm not very good at it. So I will ask for a little bit of grace as I try to run this meeting. It's maybe the second meeting I've ran in three and a half years. So forgive me for my stumbles and looks of confusion to my staff to help me. I literally got off a plane two hours ago from saying, trying to say goodbye to my father-in-law and helping my children say goodbye to my father-in-law. And with yesterday and what's happening in the world, I just really want to encourage everyone to try to be kinder to each other. I know that we don't all like each other. It goes all over the city, me, you, you, me, them, us. But I literally wake up with the things that I've been through in my life and wonder if today's my last day or if I'm going to see my husband tonight. I know that sounds crazy, but I've lost a lot of people in my life when they walked out that door and they didn't come back. And I think it's really important that we remember that we may not come back tomorrow or the next day or the next day, and our side of the street needs to be clean. So this is a crazy time in Sherwood. I understand that. I understand people are mad, all of that. I get that. But if we can really just try to be kinder to one another, even when we're not in favor of one another, I don't have a tagline to share to get that out. I just, my heart is very heavy tonight for everything that's going on around the world, around Sherwood, and I just feel like it's a good reminder that we need to keep our side of the street clean. I can't control what anyone else does or says, but I need to be able to look myself in the mirror and feel like I did all right by me. And if it's my time to go, am I going to be okay with who I am and what I've done? And so I just wanted to put that out there. I'm nervous as all heck to do this. I wasn't anticipating doing this. I certainly wouldn't have had a flight come in at 5:30 at night if I had anticipated that I would have to do this. But I just am asking for your grace and asking for people to just try to be nice tonight and going forward. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to our consent agenda, resolution 2017-071, extending workers' compensation coverage. Approval of the agenda? Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Groundhog Day consent agenda. Resolution 2017-071, extending workers' compensation coverage to volunteers of the city of Sherwood and repealing resolution 2002-014, 2001-0, excuse me, -970, 2000-874, and 96-643. Resolution 2017-072, authorizing staff to apply for Washington County Community Development Block Grant. Resolution 2017-073, authorizing city staff to apply for grant funds from the Department of Land Conservation and Development in support of the update to the Sherwood Comprehensive Plan. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? So far, so good. Sylvia, do we have any citizen comment?
Thank you. Tim Rosner. Tim Rosner. Rosen? Rosner?
It's Rosner.
Rosner, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to, by the way, appreciate your comments that you just made. I agree with you that, that, I'm sorry. This happened last time. I, no, I really appreciate your comments at the beginning of the meeting. I think it's important that we all debate respectfully and stick to the facts. For me personally, the facts speak for themselves, and that's where we should be as we have debate within our community. The reason I wanted to talk is, I'll just keep this really brief. There's been a lot of discussion about canceling the RFP. And I just wanted to really clarify my comments that I made in the last meeting about that. What I was really talking about in canceling was rebuilding trust. You know, if we cancel the RFP, what I was suggesting is we go through a new process that's transparent, that has involvement from the citizens, so everyone understands what we're doing and why we're doing it. So that, that was kind of where I was coming from. I think a lot of people, that was a rallying cry before the HF contract was voted down by the council to kind of expedite getting to a YMCA solution. But I just wanted to clarify for everyone, that's what I was thinking about when I suggested that we cancel the RFP. It's really about rebuilding the trust that is obviously, we have a challenge right now between some of the, some in the public and the leadership in the community. So that's, that's what I wanted to say. All right, thank you.
RJ Claus.
Robert James Claus, 22211 Southwest Pacific Highway. I find this a very interesting period because first it was Jim Rapp. He was city manager when we were here. Now he was blessed with no growth. We celebrated when they built three houses in one year. Jim left over policy decisions, and the only reason it wasn't chaos is because there was nothing going on. It's that simple. Then we went through a series of city managers, including a couple of people that actually left after being here about two months. I'm not going to use any names because in the conversations I had with the particularly people like Lee Weissvogel, they said this is almost ungovernable. Now, I don't know if anybody's thinking about where they've got themselves, but we've agreed you shouldn't be paid. And we should agree a perfect time to attack somebody is when they're getting over illness. We've written down some amazing things about citizen representatives, and we should go to the maximum, including my opinion, it's what may be false statements in government documents to get rid of them. We should do whatever we have to do to get rid of these non-paid people. Understand this, we did this to ourselves. We'd negotiate with the Y when we should have. We had a contract that was 20 years no rent increase, and that wasn't good enough for them. And now it comes back to you. My advice is this, make sure you don't get rid of this staff. Because if you do, and that's what's being pushed, you are going to be the most defenseless municipality in Washington County. We don't want to annex anything. The school district had to go around us, and they did. And now we're going to have Sunset go back to what it should have been an artery before there was pressure to keep us a village. Hell, it wasn't a village, it was a stupid little neighborhood that wanted to run the town. And nobody in Wood even wants to say anybody to me because when my son litigated over protecting the wetlands out there, there wasn't any association that agreed but took credit for the legal win. I've seen this, but I'm telling you, God help us, if we lose more of this council and then we start losing the city manager and the staff. Because we don't have the backup here for it. And we don't have the way to prevail and ask you to spend one year of your time running this city. And then you're going to have some real problems because it's alienation because the next thing that's going to happen is it's going to break into lawsuits. You're not going to have any way in this town to protect you. I have heard things I have never thought I would hear in Oregon. I don't think it ought to go here, the hotel, it ought to go over here. What? That's a restraint against alienation, and that's coming out of people who supposedly know what they're doing. And Miss Isaiah Chrisanna Clark, God bless you. I hope that your new life and your new family is good for you. And I really think we should have had a nice party asking her she left, not a foot in the face. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all that I have for citizen comment. Is there anyone else? Let's move on to our city manager's report.
So council president and council, I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about a number of issues. It's really, I think, educational, hopefully for the public because I'm getting a lot of questions about what happens now. So, and I'm going to make a couple of recommendations for your consideration tonight. So let's deal with the first question, the filling of counselor, former councilor's Dan King's seat. My recommendation to you, as I've said to you in an email this week, is both remaining candidates are available a week from tonight. The planning commission is not meeting in this room next week, so this room is available. My recommendation is for you to hold a special meeting next Tuesday night in this room, interview those two final candidates, and make a decision next week and fill that seat. I think it's critical in light of what may happen with the recall, that you don't get down to three members, you need to have four. And I think we can do that next week. So the other thing that I would do next week, if you do do that meeting, you need to declare the mayor's seat vacant. There's a process for that, and I'm going to go through that in a second. But you can handle that next week as well, instead of waiting for two more weeks. So I'm going to go through this, and then you can give me some feedback on the things that I'm asking, so.
Could I just ask you a quick question?
Sure.
While we're there. Have you checked with the two remaining people to make sure they're available for next week?
Yes, they are available.
Okay.
Yep. Next issue is filling of Mayor Clark's seat. Obviously, we got the resignation late yesterday afternoon. There's been a lot of questions that I've gotten. I've seen questions on social media, and I want to kind of go through what the steps are. They should sound familiar because we've done this with Counselor King's seat recently or tried to do that. One thing I want to make sure people understand is Counselor Harris does not become the mayor. I've had citizens say, does, because she's council president, does she become the interim mayor? Is she the mayor now? And she does not become the mayor. She's the council president. And until you fill the mayor's seat, she assumes some of those responsibilities. So running the meeting, as you see tonight, setting the agenda, things like that, that's essentially it in terms of her responsibilities, filling that vacuum with the mayor's seat now empty. Filling the mayor's vacancy, I'm going to go through kind of step by step just for clarity. We also are going to put out a FAQ on the website so people can go and kind of see because there's a lot of questions. This is new territory. This doesn't happen very often. So most of these requirements are in the city charter, and some of these are in the city code. So the first step is the council needs to declare the vacancy. You do that through resolution. I'm suggesting or recommending you do that next week. Because 13 months or more remain in former Mayor Clark's term, there must be an appointment by council to fill the position on a temporary basis until the election can be held. So you have to fill that seat on a temporary basis. That's in the city charter. Notice of that vacancy is provided to appropriate neighborhood organizations, civic groups, a newspaper of general circulation, and other recognized groups. That's in the city code. The deadline for submitting application is at least two weeks after the notice. So next week, if we meet and you have a resolution, if you want a longer period of time, you need to let me know. But we're essentially going to do the standard two weeks for people to apply to serve as an interim mayor. Council may hold interviews and make inquiries as necessary. That's in the code. That's entirely up to you in terms of, like you've done for Counselor, former Counselor King's seat, you've gone through interviews. You probably do the same thing, depending on how many people actually applied to be an interim mayor, assuming we would get applications for someone to be interim mayor. Then after you hold those interviews, a vote of the majority of the remaining counselors is required to fill the vacancy, which can occur at a regular or special meeting. That's in the charter as well. So essentially, let's assume the five of you are still remaining at that point. It would actually be six because hopefully you will fill that vacancy. You would decide who that interim mayor would be. That person, whoever you select, would serve until the next available election, which in this case is March 13, 2018. You could hold a special emergency meeting prior to that, but that will be more expensive for the city. So the next available election is in March. So if you pick someone to serve on an interim basis, that person serves until the March election, and if someone else is elected different than the interim mayor, someone else will be in that seat then to serve the remaining portion of Mayor Clark's term, which ends at the end of 2018. So hopefully, and we'll put this on the website so people can read this and cite the specific sections of the charter and code, but that's the process, essentially. There is no deadline in the charter for you to make an interim appointment. So one of the things that's unique to our charter, if, if a vacancy is filled and there's 13 months or less in the term, you actually have a 45-day timeline that you have to fill that. The charter is silent on any kind of deadline to fill a vacancy when it's 13 months or more. So any questions on that from council in terms of process? I know Josh had sent that to you late this afternoon. Okay. I think that's it in terms of filling vacancies at this point. I'm going to, go ahead.
Do you need any voting from us or just, can we just tell you Tuesday works for us?
If it works, you can just let me know. You don't have to vote.
Does that work for everyone? On Tuesday? Okay.
I'm going to switch gears to the Rex Center RFP and next steps because I also saw a lot of confusion online and, okay, what, where are we and what's the next steps and things like that? So I'm going to let Josh kind of talk about that with one intro. I've had a number of conversations with Mark Burris, including this afternoon, laying the groundwork to start that negotiation process with the YMCA. So we're looking at calendar dates. We have to start meeting and things like that. So we're starting to lay that groundwork to start that process. But I wanted Josh to actually kind of talk a little bit about the process and where we are and timelines and things like that, so. And then after you're done, I have one much better topic to talk about.
Okay.
More fun, I should say.
Okay. So we talked about all this last week, so a lot of this will sound familiar, but we talked about a lot of things last week, so maybe there, I want to make sure that everything is clear in everyone's mind. So on August 15th, council approved a resolution directing the city manager to negotiate with the proposers in ranked order and setting out timelines and procedures for doing that. We're still operating under that resolution until, unless and until we get different direction from council. So at this point, the deadline for negotiations with Health Fitness is October 15th. That is the absolute latest that we can continue negotiations with Health Fitness. We're within a, it was initial 30-day time period and then up to 30 days extension by the city manager. We're within that second 30 days now. So the city manager could cut that short and start those negotiations, end those negotiations sooner, but October 15th is the, the latest that those could continue. Once we've, he's either terminated those negotiations or we've reached that October 15th deadline, under the resolution that was passed on August 15th, he moves on to negotiating with the next ranked proposer, which is the YMCA. And the same rules apply as did with Health Fitness. So it's initial 30 days and up to a 30-day extension by the city manager and bringing that back to council for consideration and approval or rejection. So unless we, we get some other direction from council, that's the procedure we're operating under.
Can I ask you a question? We've already voted on the Health Fitness contract, so you, so are we, you said that we had until October 15th to finalize that, but that decision's already been made, so
The existing?
We don't have to wait until October 15th to start negotiating with the Y, do we?
You don't, you don't have to. Under the resolution, that's the city manager's discretion. I'll let him speak to what his discretion, his exercise of his discretion is, but in theory, you rejected that contract.
Right.
He could go back to Health Fitness and they could say, we're going to do this to sweeten the pot, we're going to do that to sweeten the pot, and we're going to bring back a different contract for city council, in theory. But I'll let him speak to what his intentions are.
Thank you.
So I'm not going to do that. Health Fitness, we've been focused on resignations and, you know, the recall and everything else. I have not spoken with Health Fitness since last Tuesday. I will speak with them and basically send them a letter saying we're done. I don't hold any hope that they can come back with anything more than what they put on the table. I think if they thought they could, I would have heard from them. My phone's been silent, so I just need to terminate that process and begin the process with the Y. So that's what my plan is this week, so.
So for our 60 days or 30 days with the additional 30, when does that start? Does that start when you give that notice to Health Fitness? Like from there forward?
My suggestion is let's stick to the October 15th date. I mean, quite honestly, the Y is assembling their team. The first day we were targeting to try to start would be October 13th. I think we can start two days before, but I would go 30 days from that October 15th, which takes us to November 15th. And then if I need more, then it would be December 15th.
Yeah, under, under the resolution, it's 30 days to negotiate plus 30 more. So whenever you start the negotiations is when that clock would start.
I'm okay with that. Do you need anything from us to say that works?
No, I just wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page.
What do we have for December meetings? Schedule the dates of those?
December, you have two meetings in December. Just a second.
The 5th and the 19th?
The 5th and the 19th.
So would we have to come back on the 5th for a vote in, in theory?
Um, that would be a good target date. Okay. So any other questions related to the RFP and negotiating and who we're negotiating with? I just want to make sure we're very clear, not only with you, the council, but with the community. Okay. The last item, I'm going to switch over to Chief Growth because there's an event in town tomorrow. So Chief, can you talk about what's going to go on over at Symposium tomorrow in the morning?
Absolutely, thank you. And I'm, I'm glad we have so many people here. I expect to see every one of you tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock. So, well, actually, I'll give you a two-hour window. Between 9 and 11, we'll have our second Coffee with a Cop at Symposium tomorrow. And tomorrow happens to be National Coffee with a Cop Day. So if for some reason you can't make it to Symposium, then try to make it somewhere, find an event somewhere. But it'll be a great time, and if you're not familiar with Coffee with a Cop, again, because this is only our second one, there's no agenda. It is simply come together, get a cup of coffee. We'll, the brewed coffee is being provided by Symposium. If you, if you want something fancier, you're on your own with that, but we'll get you a cup of brewed coffee, and we just sit down and chat. And, and really, our intent is to get to know everybody that shows up better. And we have old friends that show up, but we also have new friends. And last, the first one we had was in August, several people showed up that heard about it, that were new to the community and just wanted to come down and, and meet some of the, their police officers. And that's, that's just perfect. That's exactly what we would like to see happen. So please join us tomorrow, 9 to 11, Symposium Coffee with a Cop, National Coffee with a Cop Day.
So I'm going to ask the tough question. Can we have tea?
National Coffee?
That's fine. I just know some tea drinkers out there, so.
That's right. There's no good jingle with tea with a cop.
You could have, you could have tea with a traffic officer.
I'm a coffee drinker, so I'll be drinking my coffee.
The traffic officer.
So any questions for myself or any of the department directors that are here before we move on to council comments? Seeing none, thank you.
Let's move on to council comments. Who wants to go first? I'll start at the end.
Sure. I will make it quick. I think I've said enough over the last few weeks, and I'm, I have a little bit of cold, so just liaison stuff. I got a regional water provider. Just liaison stuff, I got a regional water providers consortium meeting, I'm getting better at saying that mouthful, tomorrow night in Portland, it's a, we meet three times a year. I would suggest if anybody's interested, has some interest in water conservation, or they also have a lot of great information on their Facebook page about emergency preparedness. So it's a really great website, tons of information, their Facebook page, again, it's Regional Water Providers Consortium. Other than that, the other note that I would have for everybody is, we haven't talked much about it lately, but there is a election coming up on November 7th where we'll be electing the permanent seventh councillor for our, for our council, as well as some other items that are on the agenda, are on the ballot. It's also the repeal of the marijuana, recreational marijuana sales in Sherwood. So the deadline for registering to vote is October 17th. So if you're not registered to vote, do a Google search for Washington County Registered Vote, get yourself registered to vote, and vote. There it is. Thanks.
I would like to say, please, if you can go to Coffee with a Cop, it's really fun. I got a chance to meet three or four new police officers when I happened upon them and I was leaving late for work, and I thought, oh, wow, look at all those police officers, I'm going to stop, and I did, and it was really a lot of fun. So if you have some time to stop at Symposium tomorrow and have some coffee with a cop, it's a lot of fun. I wanted to thank everybody who participated in the Unity Project this past week. It was an incredible success. Thank you to Maggie Chapin and her whole team, Kelsey Beelstein, Mary Wegelin, Leah Burgess with the Center for the Arts, and then the Cultural Arts Commission led by Sky Bowie, Matthew Chantin, who's also here tonight, thank you, Matthew, Bernie Sims, Jeff Beasley, Matty Gravelbigs, Briggs, and also our Public Works team. Darren and Harry did a great job getting that all pulled together. It was an excellent project. I'm hoping that the Cultural Arts Commission can do something like that every year. It really, it was really wonderful to see so many people from all walks of life coming and participating. We have actually two Rotary Exchange students that are on exchange from France and Russia at the high school this year, and they came out to participate, so it was really cool. And then I wanted to give a shout out to our own Captain Daniel, wherever he is, he was in the back. He did a great presentation at the League of Oregon Cities Conference. He stood in for Chief Growth, who was ill, and this was a conference on city employee emergency preparedness and scenario planning, and we had over 50 people in attendance on that particular talk. Captain Daniel spoke with also the state emergency planner, as well as the emergency planner for the city of Portland, and it was really well received. He's an excellent speaker, and we're really lucky to have him, so that's all my comments.
We had a, we had a Parks and Recreation meeting last night and talked about the Cedar Creek Trail, which is moving along at a snail's pace, but it's still in the works in the background, so that's wonderful. I also asked that the staff show a video on a bike track, what's it called?
Pump track.
Pump track. The city manager had forwarded to me a video about a pump track that's up in Washington, and it's sort of like a skate park. So you're, it would be to take away the bikers from the skate park that ultimately we hopefully have next to our recreation facility. So I have a real interest in sharing that with everyone and trying to see if we get some interest in that for our parks. The other thing I wanted to mention is that this has been a very stressful time for everybody, and I am a very passionate outspoken person, if you don't know me. And I get, I get a little excited sometimes, and I, I have no bad intention when I do that. So if anyone was offended by my comments, I apologize. I would like to serve out the rest of my term and ask you to vote no on the recall.
So I too attended the League of Oregon Cities Conference, and I attended the great presentation by Captain Daniel, and he did do a great job. I also, it was my first conference, so I got to attend the councillor workshop, which was really a neat thing where you get to meet councillors from all over the state, councillors that you can collaborate with and just talk to and get to know each other, so that was really good. What I really liked about the conference was the keynote speaker. We had, get her name here right, Mary, Major Mary Jennings, she was a combat rescue pilot in the Army. And her topic that night was, if they're telling you it can't be done, prove them wrong. And she was just very passionate, and she went into some of her battle stories and some rescues that she did. She's written a book called Shoot Like a Girl. What she was discussing was the importance of teamwork and individual advocacy, inspiring us to embody the change we seek. Her exceptional grit shows that fighting for what you believe in on the battlefield and beyond is always worthwhile. And it was just a really great presentation that she did, and I was really happy that I attended that. That was it. I didn't have any of my liaison meetings the last two months, they've been canceled, so that's it for tonight. Thanks.
I have been a little preoccupied, so I didn't prepare any of my words for my liaison assignments, but what I would like to do, because it's, again, on my heart, is thank the chief and the city for doing an active shooter training for us here with everything that's going on. It just really reminds me of how being prepared is important, and it kind of goes along with it, sounds like the seminar that you guys went to. And it always makes me wonder in situations like Vegas, if, if people knew what I feel like I now know thanks to the training that we got as staff here at the, at City Hall and as council, it might, might just save a life. So if you have an opportunity, and I know that the chief has talked about doing it for other, in other areas and other places, but if your workplace or someone has the opportunity to do it, I highly recommend doing it. I, you think you know what you would do, but I learned a lot from that session, and I feel like it would serve me well in, in situations where I had to somehow use it. And so I just wanted to say thank you. I know that, that that's one of the most scary scenarios you could ever, ever be in. And while we're running away from it, you're running to it, and you're teaching us how to keep ourselves safe. So I would, I just wanted to say thank you for that. And also, I was hoping you might speak a little bit about the November dinner at the casino for our officers, if you wouldn't mind.
Absolutely. So I'd have to look it up, I think it's November 9th. Does that sound right? It's a Friday.
I can tell you, I have it.
It's the annual Oregon Peace Officers Association.
November 3rd.
3rd. The Oregon Peace Officers Association is a, kind of a fraternal training organization with hundreds of members throughout the state of Oregon, and, and every year they have a national training conference, and as a part of that conference, they have a pretty robust awards program. They accept award nominations from, you know, any, any law enforcement agency or whatever in the state, and they have an annual awards banquet. And so this year, three of our officers and our agency, in fact, are going to be recognized with awards as a result of our role on Christmas night on the shooting of Treber Sederberg. So it's really, there's been a lot of things that have taken place, a lot of recognition. That's really kind of what I believe to be probably the final step, just because of the timing of when their banquet is. So that'll, that'll take place in November, so several of us are going to, are going to go down. Several members of the Sherwood Police Foundation are going to attend. Myself, I think Captain Daniel, I know Joe's going to go, and I, off the top of my head, I don't remember who else, but, so that'll be a very, very heartwarming and, and rewarding evening, and of course, it's well deserved for our officers and, and our agency for how we responded to that entire thing, so, thank you.
Open to the public, so you just go online and buy your tickets? Do they buy them through the casino or a separate website?
No, actually, if you go to OPOA.org, I think.
OPOA.
Yeah, but if you just, if you just type OPOA in the, in the Google search line, it'll, it'll pop up, and then it'll be on the website, and you can register and attend the, the awards. It is open to the public, and you can buy your tickets through, through there, through the website.
Get your friends together in carpool and have fun, because you can gamble after, right?
The casino, which casino? Grand Ron?
Yeah. Right, Grand Ron. Thank you. So that's actually all I have tonight, so if nobody has anything else, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.